Can do it for me? No.
Any complaints?
Jen tried to write one. She got that right here. She did it up every time. She's gonna eat.
All right, guys, it's seven. Let's do this.
Let us pray. Most kind, gracious, heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and for all your many blessings of life, Lord. God, we just pray that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they meet, taking care of the business at hand. And, Lord, as always, we pray that you'll be with our nation. Lord God, that you'll be with our county. Lord, I just pray that you'll be with each and every one that's lost loved ones in the last couple of days. Those, Lord, that are going through a time of suffering. And as always, I pray that you'll be with my buddy, Landon. For it's in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman. Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Mush Davis.
Here.
Kristy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan. John Pippinger.
Here.
Samantha Trent. We've got approval of the last monthly motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
We now have the approval of the reports of offices. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
And no notaries to approve this time, so that's next. All right, budget amendments. We have got General 101. Line number 34515, an amount of $7,732.28, going into line item 525100188 for $6,864 for 52500201 for Social Security at $4,2556. Then into 204 for state retirement at $343.20, and to 212 for Medicare at $99.52 for a total of $7,732.28. Then we have one for General 101 for the Sheriff's Department. Miscellaneous going in in-service data, uniform office supplies, law enforcement supplies, communications, and then food also for the $25,496 total. Then we also have one for the 101 for 10143395 for the Sex and Hand registry at $1,600. And then 101 to 54230160 for the guards at $1,600. And then also, we have 39000, undesignated fund balance of $351. Also, 5210205 of $16,000 for accounting insurance. 52300399 for the accessories contracted service of $1,075. And then $39,000 of $20,000, and then another $39,000 of $78,551. And then 52500334 of $224 for a total of $116,201. Going into several different expenditures for Medicare maintenance, contracted services, hotel motel tax flow-through, juvenile, airport maintenance and improvements, and then add county clerk office supplies for a total of $101,16201. Motion to approve, 5353. Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right, now we've got a food service fund amendment for the Polk County. I assume this is the school board.
I talked to James before the meeting, and he forgot about the meeting. He married about 15 to say, he let us all this grant money and flow-through money and budget cleanup until toward the end of the year.
Yes.
But if there are any questions, I'll step back and call them.
I'll make a motion to approve, number two.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right, we have moved. We have the. Oh, the road. Sorry. I put that over here. All right, we've got the road department. Sorry, I don't go ahead. For, let's see, gasoline miscellaneous refunds, salad equipment group program, state aid, gasoline, hybrid of the federal through state, direct federal revenue and transfers, a total of $251,158 from the restricted fund balance. Going into several different, there are insurance, there Medicare, legal services, uniforms, laborers, overtime. And it's gonna come $2,148,168, and also then total $2,148,168 out of the other. Is there any questions on this at all?
Can someone explain it?
Not sure. Yes, we have representation here.
Okay, you'll have to excuse because I'm a little bit unfamiliar with the way you do things. So basically what I have done, the ones that are in red, I have taken money out of those funds. Your revenues is on the left-hand side and the fund balance. On the right-hand side, the expenditures, again, the ones that are in black, we add to those line items. The ones in red is subtracting from those line items. So it evens out to the $2,148,168 balance on both sides.
So this is just to clean up your.
Yes.
At the end of the.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie, Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
And Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right, now we have, we're gonna bump up the West Polk FFA from Commissioner Pippinger and Davis.
We have a resolution here tonight that has been written in kind of in honor of the whole achievement of the FFA. A couple of special ladies, young ladies have been mentioned in this, but before I read it, we just wanna congratulate everybody. And it, this is just outstanding. So anyway, whereas the Polk County Legislative Body acknowledges the importance of agriculture leadership in young citizens of the county, and whereas the Polk County Future Farmers of America have demonstrated their commitment to each of these values in a big way over the '23-'24 school year. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Polk County County Commission meeting in irregular session. Is that irregular or regular?
It's irregular.
Irregular, 'cause it's a different day, yeah. Irregular session of this 23rd day of May, 2024, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, that the Polk County Legislative Body shows its gratitude to the Polk County High School Future Farmers of America members for their dedication to agriculture, representation of Polk County, to other counties, groups, and entities in the state of Tennessee as the excellence of the program in 11 different career and leadership development events from the districts to state levels, which includes meat evaluation, horse evaluation, employment skills, floriculture, milk quality analysis, food science, environmental and natural resource, quiz bowl, farm business management, and land evaluation. This class also includes two Eastern Region proficiency winners, Ms. Zoe Hatcher in ag processing entrepreneurship, and Ms. Adeline, I don't know if I'm saying her name right or not.
That's correct.
Okay, Adeline Hare in specialty crop production placement, with Ms. Hatcher also achieving State Star designation in agribusiness. The entire FFA class has shown itself to be outstanding in the futurists of farming and leadership in the county of Polk and beyond. The county commission recognizes and gives thanks to each of you and your instructors, the school system itself, for these great accomplishments. The proclamation shall become effective today, I guess. So, congratulations to everybody.
Ms. Adeline and Ms. Zoe, would y'all stand up, sir, and see who you are, if they don't know? I know they don't like to, I know Adeline doesn't like to be looked at. Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations. As a farmer, I know what you're in for, but good luck.
All right. Any discussion? Any motion?
Motion.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Clear. All right.
Got it?
We got it. Motion to accept it? Do we have to have a motion?
I'll make a motion too.
All right.
Second.
Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent. All right, now Mr. Dan Howell's here with us tonight, and he's got a special little resolution he wants to do, so we'll try to handle him.
Thank you, Chair Lady. It's good to be here. Also before, seeing good to have my colleague, Senator Adam Lowe. He's visiting over here in this Senate district. He's from Senate District 1. Good to have him with us tonight. Also glad to have my son, Rick, visiting with us from Kansas City. FAA is something we all as legislators look forward to. Every year when they have their FFA Day on the Hill. Now, some people will say it's because they feed us breakfast early in the morning, but that's not the reason we look forward to it. They're such outstanding young people. They're just tremendously motivated, well-behaved, well-spoken. I've never seen anyone give a speech better than an FAA member. They're just incredible. And we always have guests on the floor during the Day on the Hill. And we have always an outstanding group of people who come and represent their various chapters from around the state. This year, one young lady stood out, to me at least, and I think to Polk County as well. And that young lady is Zoe Hatcher, who's hiding over there behind the light. So, Ms. Zoe, if you could come forward, I would like to, I'm not gonna read the entire thing 'cause it's quite lengthy.
Yes, sir.
I'll hit the highlights, and then we can read it later. How are you, Ms. Zoe?
I'm good.
Good to see you. We're glad to honor you on behalf of the state of Tennessee. This is a House joint resolution. A resolution to honor and commend Zoe Hatcher upon her receipt of the Tennessee Star Award in agribusiness. That's the top award. She's a state champion.
Yeah.
She's a state champion. Whereas it is most fitting that the members of this General Assembly should especially recognize these outstanding citizens who have dedicated their lives to promoting the importance of agriculture in our society. And whereas one such individual is Zoe Hatcher, who is a recipient of the Tennessee Star Award in agribusiness. We'll skip on down. Whereas a young entrepreneur of many talents and interests, Zoe Hatcher owns her own business. She works on the HHH farm. Zoe's goat milk soap, if you haven't tried it, you might want to. Works on her family's 200-acre diversified farm alongside her parents. And whereas a few years ago, Ms. Hatcher added a herd of goats to the mix. Once she keeps up with the schoolwork, and don't you play sports as well? I know so. So she's a busy girl. Whereas her noteworthy achievement is a tremendous source of pride for her parents. Am I right in that?
Yes, sir.
I thought I was.
Interna.
Robbie and Tia, interna, I forgot her name right there. Whereas it is fitting that we honor Zoe Hatcher for her valuable service to agriculture, agricultural education, and the farming community now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 113th General Assembly of the state of Tennessee, the Senate concurring that we honor and commend Zoe Hatcher upon her receipt of the Tennessee Star Award in agribusiness, and extend to her our best wishes for continued success in her future endeavors. Now, let me say, this award is signed by Governor Lee. It's also signed by the Speaker of the House, Cameron Sexton. Speaker of the Senate, Brandon McCallie. Senator Adam Lowe also was a joint sponsor on this, so he has signed this right down here. Art Swan, who is the current Senator for Polk County, and myself. And as an official act of the Tennessee Legislature, this is a part of Tennessee history, and it will be enshrined in the archives of the state of Tennessee. So, Ms. Zoe Hatcher is now a part of Tennessee history. Congratulations. Give a picture, Mrs. Zoe. I signed these guys' enshrines. You wanna get a picture?
I'll get it.
Okay. Thank, oh, Zoe? I have a separate cause. You wanna get a few now?
All right, next is the Sheriff's Office Patrol Cars. Sheriff Ross, you want to speak on that?
I think I've pretty much explained it. Most of it, we put in for grants through the Council of Representatives Office for patrol cars, a total of $700,000. It is a 20% match, which equals $140,000. I know I've got a car fund that we purchase our cars out of, but it's hard for me to keep the $140,000 in without buying another car because our cars, as y'all know, they tear up pretty quick. So what I would like to ask for y'all, when the time comes, and it could be middle or later '25, before this money comes available, if y'all could spot me half of that match, as soon as my car fund recovered, I'd get the money back to you. So I'll maintain $70,000 in my car fund to make sure at that time, and then if y'all will spot me some, I guess, interest-free loan, it shouldn't take, but, I don't know, four, five months, hopefully, for us to do it, or that back into the fund.
I make a motion. What do you think?
Say.
Any discussion, any questions?
That's our separate resolution. It's our resolution, yes. It was not.
All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
Sean Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, Commissioner Trent, on the recreation.
So Tim Morley called and said that he would like to resign from the recreation department on our side. And they wanted to put Raymond Akins on there. So I don't know if we need, how we need to do that, but Tim doesn't, he's resigned. So Raymond said that he would take his place. I think that we have to make applications for that.
Let's take application. I think that's always one.
Take applications, and I'll bring them back at the next county commission meeting. And if anybody, if anybody needs those, feel free to contact the office receiving action. We'll get an email to them as quickly as we can.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Carter, sanitation site updates.
Yeah, I'm just gonna give an update on what we got going on our sanitation. At South Polk, the activation has started down there. We're gonna add some hackers and area for a tire trailer. So it's ongoing. And then at our Benton side, we've had some gates and fences repaired. So if you notice, when we went out there, they're not following down. So we have got that. And then we wanna continue with a official notification system for offenders of the sanitation site. Like if they are out of county, if they are dumping it outside the fence, stuff like that. What I wanna do is see an official form notification that we can mail out to these people and have tiers, you know, like first events, hey, we're warning. Second offense, hey, you know, we're gonna do something, and then, you know, work it down to where we try to keep this from happening. And we're gonna talk with the county attorney about that, see if he can draw us up something on that. And then, in the near future, Mr. Hatcher and I are gonna do an inspection of all sites in the county. And we're gonna make a list of what's needed, work to be done, you know, stuff like that. So if any of y'all know of anything going on, let us know. But one thing is, I wanna see the sites cleaned up from all the trash that's just blown, you know, up against the fence and stuff like that. And then we have a new contractor for our removal of our sanitation department. So I'm bragging on those guys, I haven't heard any malfunctions, shortcomings, or whatever. And I just wanna let it, you know, give them a hats off, you know, good job keeping up, because we really need it. And then we got some future projects that we're just, you know, passing around ideas about. And like at Drassy Creek, we're gonna add another precursor and another packer, right?
Packer.
Just a packer.
Just a packer.
Okay. And another packer at South Polk. And then at the Benton side, we're gonna add an additional precursor. So this is just future phase to think of. But we need to maintain this thing. And we need to start a, how do you say it? A maintenance scheduling of the equipment, because the equipment is, some of it's failing. And what we talked about was, like, the precursor Benton is in need of repairs. So what we're gonna do is get a new precursor to replace it, take that one out, send it off for review. And then we'd have something to sit back and play. And then so if anybody's got any questions on that or any ideas, let us know. I wouldn't, I didn't have this on the list, but I'm gonna call Roy Jean out, but I saw him here. So I wanna propose to Roy Jean that we talk about interlopend agreement, you know, for the county to help us maintain the areas, the law areas. If you'd be interested in entertaining that idea, that inter.
Something together, see what y'all want to do. It's been some time ago.
Yeah, and what that is, you know, the area, the road areas and the law areas, you know, take a lot of beating. And what was sort of proposed is the county road department make the repairs for us, and then the county pays back the road departments for the work done.
So it's a lot cheaper that way.
Yeah. But we need an agreement between the road department and the county so this can be done. So it didn't need to put Jonesburg on, Jean.
That's all right.
It just availability.
It's just to define, you know, what these things and costs.
Yeah.
It's just good business.
Yep. And I guess last thing would be something that I have like a personal interest in. The county needs a maintenance person to be called to do work on like sanitation sites, which it could involve the courthouse, any building, or anything going on. You know, because what we gotta do, we gotta look for a contractor. Like this precursor at Benton side was inoperable. And I went out there and looked at it, and I've done a few things, you know, what little I could do, but it was a big job. So we had to get a contractor to come out there and do these repairs. Where I think if we had a maintenance person that we could call, they could do probably 80% of these jobs. And then maybe the 20% would go right to bid. But that's just something to think about. If you made any great new ideas, I'm open to ideas.
Maintenance man should be looked at at budget time.
Yeah. And I'm not asking for any vote on anything, I'm just giving you an update, you know, what I've seen and, you know, trying to get a handle on this. And I don't know if anybody knows. And I didn't know this until I took this job. It's a state requirement that the county provide this sanitation, huh? I didn't know that. I thought it was just something the county did, because they thought it was a good idea, but the state thought it was a good idea. And it may be good. You know, it costs a lot of money to do it. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, where does the money gonna come from? And they've been some ideas, they're, you know, thrown around, that how to raise revenue to do this stuff. But it's got to be provided.
Because at some point in time, I mean, you're gonna have to look at the revenue that goes into the sanitation.
Yes.
Because it can't sustain itself.
Yeah.
There's gonna have to be some increase in revenue.
Yeah, we gotta do something. And I hate it as much as anybody else, but like I say, you know, since I've taken this home, I have learned a lot about what goes on, you know. And I tell you what, if you're on Facebook, the duh is the, it's a hot topic. So, you know, it's as hot a topic as it is on Facebook. It ought not be too hot of a topic to have debate. That's all I get. You're talking about maintenance, man. We don't have one on the east side anymore.
Correct.
We don't have a maintenance person.
He go back forth, right? Correct. The man that was doing maintenance on the east side of his last day was Friday. Had a leak, had a leak in the building on Thursday. Had that leak come back in today, and another leak in health department today, and had a leak in the courthouse this week.
And to look at the agenda, the next item on the agenda is a bid for some work to be done at our Benton side. And, you know, what we're proposing is the tire trailer. And layering on tire trailers is a big issue. You know, we get tires from outside the county and stuff like that. And, you know, we just got an old 53-foot trailer pool down there. And, you know, the county, what they want is you come out there, you bring tires. You get them out of your truck, you throw them in the back of that 53-foot trailer, and you get in there and you lay some in there. Well, I told Hatcher, I said, "Well, that's fine and dandy." I said, "But if you take somebody my age, it's hard to get up in a 53-foot trailer. It's four foot off the ground. There's no steps, no ladder, no bed."
It definitely needs steps.
All right.
Because Randy threw me up in it.
Yeah, it's hard to sit in. It's hard for a young man.
So I'm telling you, it ain't good.
What you're gonna hear on this hillside.
I just wanna see it.
We have developed a plan to do some some work down here, and we're gonna have this trailer work, it'll be backed up to kind of like a loading dock. And that way, you pull in, you put a tire on the ground, you roll it straight in that trailer. trailer, and you can walk right into it. But it's going to cost money. You know? But it's going to be better. And then we'll have this where we can gate this off at night because a lot of our illegal tires are coming at night and we can't control it. And to go along with that, the next step is, we need a surveillance system out there to monitor, to make sure people are not doing this illegally. And that goes along with that county notification. And, uh, let's put in, there you go. There's your sanitation update.
Good job. Go just, go right into that. All right, please, Ms. Hatcher.
So Danny said we had some concrete work went out to be, you had two bids turned in. The first one by HNL Construction. All the concrete was to be a 4,000 PSI with four-inch gravel base. Newly poured areas will have a smooth transition. All pads have wire fiber reinforcement, a total of three pads to be poured. A 25 by 30 pad, that would be the dock tire unloading area. This pad is to be poured six inches deep with a four-inch gravel base, 4,000 PSI with wire mesh and fiber reinforcement. A 60 by 14 pad, that's the tire trailer area. This pad is to be poured eight inches deep, four-inch gravel base, 4,000 PSI concrete, fiber reinforcement, a single mat with number five rebar on 12-inch centers. Another 60 by 14 pad, which is going to be known as the dumpster pad. The pads will be poured eight inches deep with a four-inch gravel base, 4,000 PSI concrete, fiber reinforcement, a single mat, number five rebar on 12-inch centers. The wall was approximately 40 feet and linked 12 inches thick and approximately five and a half feet tall. A footer for the wall would be two feet wide, 12 feet deep. And all footing and wall rebar with a number five on 12-inch centers. An L-bar coming out of the footing for a dock wall bumper to be installed and a dock plate for the trailer. HNL Construction's bid was $56,485. The other bid that was turned in was some Days Concrete, and it was a total of $47,900. That was the two bids that were submitted. Days Concrete.
I make a motion to set Days' bid 9,000 cheaper.
I'll say it.
Any discussion?
What are we paying for it? What are we paying for it? What are we paying?
What fund?
I mean, so where's the money coming from?
Budget may be next month. Correct. Yeah, I didn't have all that, whoever we're going to go with. So we're just trying to get that going as well.
Is that out of our general fund?
You all tell me wherever, if you want to pull it out of general fund, if you want to pull it out of some of the tribals, if you want to pull it out of something else that's out there. I know there's a lot of different funds that are out there.
What all funds we got left to put money in?
You know all of them. I can't remember all of them exactly. Just tell me which one you want it out of. And we'll get the budget memo.
It's not you, John. It's Greg's, our pot.
We'll figure that out next month. He pays.
And like I said, if anybody has a preference, let us know. And that way we can bring it. We just have one, we'll have to have your approval.
Who made the second? John? I think John.
I make one of them.
All right. Any other discussion? Real call. Keith Parker?
Yeah.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Davy Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Sally McHam?
Yes.
Sean Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
All right. Surplus equipment from the community center in Depp Town.
This is for four desks, two upper broken, four filing cabinets that have rust on, don't lock, bookshelves that are broken, eight chairs, two tables, and a tow truck.
They just need to sell to give away.
Sounds like. Maybe it needs to go to dump.
Might be better than a dump.
Yes. So I do have a resolution attached. This will be resident decisions on Monday. One or two?
Two.
Two, thank you.
Unless you're-
My oldest proclamation.
Okay.
My oldest proclamation, two, 2024.
Resolution to discharge surplus property, whereas the following listed properties have fulfilled the intended usage and longevity of service, the county of Polk and its continued usage has become suspect of the expected outcome, with such properties being included as everything that I read aloud to be attached to this page. Therefore, on this, the 23rd day of May 2024, per TCA Code 5-14-108 and 1 and 2 and any other laws of the state of Tennessee, the county executive is hereby authorized to sell or disperse in part or a whole the following properties which are hereby deemed to be unusable and/or surplus by the Polk County Commission, being made an illegal sale or discharge and qualified under the Chapter 5 TCA Code or any other applicable laws of the state of Tennessee for dispersal and surplus damage or unusable property. This resolution shall take effect upon the passage of and the public welfare requiring it.
Questions, Greg?
Say.
Any discussion?
Herein, I'm sorry. You have something to say? Vicky did ask, I did talk to Vicky today because I needed to see if my old desk was in that other little office. And she had said that there's stuff in my old office that is not hers, that she can't use that office until it's gone. Well, that stuff's not mine. Um, there's a desk in there that I am going to take out, that Till had had in there, that I'm going to use in my front office. But there's other stuff, I think she said, or someone said it might be the voters?
Election commission?
Election commission?
Maybe, because he said he had some stuff stored.
Yeah. So she needs that moved. I don't know how to get that moved or whatever, or where she needs to move it to, so Cleveland State can use that.
The election, uh, they still got an office downstairs.
Yeah, but Nathan had used it here in the last election.
So they can move it.
Oh, he had to have some stuff.
So he just needs to move it downstairs?
Yeah. I asked him not long ago, when he was here, and he said they still had an office downstairs. So he, he should be able to move it in there because he says it's not used.
And he also used the office that I have home on that floor, so that's not a problem at all. Just to get rid of.
We said no plan going over.
Correct. That's not going to be a problem.
I was sorry I mentioned that because I didn't know, it wasn't mine, so I told her I didn't know who it was, stuff in there, so.
Like I said, I've not touched it because it don't look like, so it's down. I promise you, it's gonna be gone. Or removed.
Removed.
Will be gone.
All right. Real call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Davy Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Ellie Morgan?
Yes.
Sean Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions for the property sale.
This is a resolution from our county attorney on some of the lots that are down in, what's known as the Maple Club area. So resolution 5-2. A resolution authorizing the parcels of property identified in Exhibit A attached here too, incorporated herein by reference to bid for sale during the redemption period at the amount less than the total amount of taxes, penalties, cost, and interest accumulated in the parcels of property, subject to the remaining redemption period established on the parcels of property. Number two, establishing a starting bid amount for each parcel of property. Number three, authorizing the sale of each parcel of property subject to the remaining redemption period at the party making the highest and best bid. If the highest and best bid is equal to the greater than the starting bid amount, and authorizing the county executive to execute quick claim deeds on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, conveying the parcel of property to the successful purchaser, and perform all other actions necessary and appropriate to carry out the intent of this resolution. Whereas Polk County, Tennessee acquired the parcels of property identified as Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein and referenced at the length of tax sale, whereas the county does not need to retain ownership and possession of the parcels of property. The parcels of property cannot be used for any public purpose and it is best interest for the county to sell the parcels of property. Whereas upon the application, county commission may, may grant permission to offer for sale a parcel of property for less than the total amount of taxes, penalties, cost, and interest accumulated on the parcel of property. If the commission determines that it is impossible to sell the parcel of property for the total amount owed, and whereas the Polk County Commission has determined that it is impossible to sell the parcels of property for the total amount of taxes, penalties, cost, and interest accumulated on the parcels of property, and the starting bid amounts identified as A here too and attached, incorporated here by reference, or fair and recent, meaning in a, in a regular session and assembled that, the parcels of property identified in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated here, and the reference are authorized to be offered for sale during the redemption period at an amount less than the total amount of taxes, penalties, cost, and interest accumulated on the parcel of property, subject to the remaining redemption period established on the parcel of property. Number two, the parcel of property shall be offered for sale at the starting bid amount identified as Exhibit A and attached here too and the incorporated here by reference. Number three, the parcels of property may be sold, subject to the remaining redemption period, that the party making the highest and best bid, that the highest and best bid is equal to or greater than the starting bid amount, that the county executive is authorized to execute quick claim deed on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, conveying the parcels of property to the successful purchaser, and perform all other actions necessary and appropriate to carry out the intent of this resolution. Be it further resolved, that this resolution take effect on this day and after its passage and the public welfare require, require.
Motion to approve. 3-2.
Any discussion?
This is in the unfinished portion of, that's how the bid amount will start at $50 because it's-
No road, no utilities, no, just, may not even be a right of way to. No, that's much.
Mayor Matt?
Is in the last phase, and I never put utilities or a road or nothing.
They pulled the bond before they got that part in there.
Yes.
Real call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Davy Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Ellie Morgan?
Yes.
Sean Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
All right. Library appointment.
There's actually two. Um, one came in a little late. Everybody has emailed the Greg, um, some, they all got emailed out. But number one is in Kiki Pittner, and then the other is a reapportment in Depp River. That's my two recommendations to this commission.
I make a motion to approve the two recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All right. Real call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Davy Davis?
Yes.
Mush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Harden?
Yes.
Ellie Morgan?
Yes.
Sean Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Franklin?
Yes.
All right. Announcement statement.
Don't forget, Saturday, there is going to be a chili cook-off at the O'Kendall College from 10 to 5. So the copper basin fire rescue, encourage everybody to come out and be a part of that for the local fire department. And look forward to a Memorial Day service here at the courthouse at 10 o'clock on Monday once you buy our, buy our events.
And then just to remind everybody that amen late, we'll have a budget meeting and a ambulance workshop.
June 6.
June 6, starting at 6:00.
In Depp Town. Any other questions?
If anybody'd like to purchase a traffic ticket for half of a beef that is for the Lindstedt Fire Hall, I do have those business. They are, it's a beef donated by my farm, but it's a whole beef, and they have it in the freezer. So there's actually two drawings. All the money raised goes to the Lindstedt Fire Hall. I appreciate the members of that that played the great beat here tonight for attending. Uh, y'all had a fantastic vehicle experience this Thursday. We're proud of it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Hi, everybody. It was 43.